But not a public hearing, we will be going to public with presentations in the future. And at that time, the public will have every opportunity to ask questions of either David, or Bob, or the committee. With that said, I will, I forward to David, and I've talked to Bob since our last meeting. What I wanted them to do at this point, to start us off, is to go through the cost estimate that they've provided, and help us to understand, maybe not each and every item, a lot of them are self-explanatory, kind of go through them, and explain to them what they're for, and entertain any questions that we might have about each one as we go. With that said, I'll let Bob start, I think. We did have a question in regard to fields, and whether the pricing was in for the fields in the last meeting, and that will be answered during his presentation. They weren't in originally, they are in now, and some things have been removed, and he'll go through what those are as we proceed.
What I just passed out is a slightly revised version of what you saw last week. What is revised about it, are certain elements were changed and/or removed based on Wade Connaught's comments at last week's meeting. And what was added, what has been added, is the definition to the practice fields. And they are, all those changes that I just mentioned take place in the site construction section, which is O two thousand, pages three, four, and five. So specifically on page five, we'll see the inclusion of softball field, soccer field, practice football field, baseball field, tennis courts, I believe there's six, and associated appurtenances that go along with those. There were some reductions in the site improvements, notably in the saw and mortar drain, and to a certain smaller extent to utilities, that allowed the net of all the edits to actually yield a very slight reduction in the total cost.
I'll expand just a little bit on the athletic facility sort of inventory here. We've had further discussion through school staff since we met last time to understand that better. On our sketch site plan here, we have certain facilities illustrated, but again, have a little better sense of what's needed, and I believe at this time, it was concluded that on the, on the proposed new site itself, but all of which would be on the opposite side of the river, we'd have, as Bob was just describing, a practice football field, a baseball, and then separately, a softball field, the outfield of which would overlap the football field, recognizing that they occur in different seasons, could be the six tennis courts, and their request has been, has been made for having both a, or two soccer slash lacrosse fields, which you don't presently have in the Morgan School site, but would help your, your program if that were possible. In the initial layout of that, there isn't, isn't obvious that that's all going to fit in that area, so we have to learn a little bit more about some of the setback issues before we can commit to that. But worst case scenario, there would be one soccer lacrosse field, and I believe there's another alternative, and forgive me, that the, that alternative site is not at my fingertips at the moment, but it's a place you're currently using as the second site of your soccer and lacrosse field. Obviously, the football and track would continue to occur at Peters', and so all of the fields that we're describing over here, they don't have lights, they don't have spec paper facilities, they don't have press boxes, they don't have square meters, they're strictly for the, for practice and take on school functions. And, and again, that, that's guidance that we got directed from the school staff.
To refresh your memory, referring to page one, which we reviewed last week, which is the cover page, actually. Top line, construction trade costs, this would actually take to the structure of the building, sometimes referred to as bricks and mortar. Then we have a series of contingencies, which are the design contingency, which, because this is a concept design, there's really not a lot of detail through the documents, there's a healthy allowance there to allow for evolution and growth in the design. There's escalation out to the start of 2014, which is about the earliest we could conceive of putting a shovel in the ground, another escalation value out to 2015, which is potentially more likely. You have the cost of the construction manager, which is all of his services, insurances, fees, and permits. And you have a construction contingency, which is his contingency during the course of construction, take care of issues, unforeseen issues that have, that come up, that perhaps the documents have not addressed, but something that, that should certainly be there. And then we go down to the section labeled other costs. There was a question last week about pre-referendum, I think that's in part our services, but it's also in part going forward to develop plans to be used to educate the voters as to what we're going to be asking for them to vote on, in essence, a pretty picture. It's probably an overstated number. Architect and engineering fees are what it costs to design the building, which is the architect and all of his subconsulting engineers, for which there's quite the list. Architect reversibles, civil well-accepted design, that number, I have late information this afternoon, is probably not needed, and it is probably carried in the estimate for the sanitary system, we don't get to a few minutes.
That's the sixty thousand or ninety seven dollars?
Yes, yeah.
So that would be zero?
Yes. Kitchen design fees, that's a specialty subconsultant to the architect, somebody who specializes in food service. Technology design likewise is specialty subconsultant. FFNE stands for Fixtures Furnishings and Equipment, which is typically tables, chairs, desks, file cabinets, and all of the assorted appurtenances that are sometimes referred to as blue equipment. That is also a specialty subconsult to the architect.
Do we need somebody to design the tables and chairs and desks?
They don't design them, they select them.
Oh, you mean just select your...
Yes.
And that doesn't fall under the two point five?
No, that's not, not typically part of the basic services of the architect. Basic services of the architect is the site design, the foundation, the architecture, the structure of the building, structural design, the envelope of the building, doors, windows, finishes inside a building. Specialty subconsultants are the guys who do the wiring design, either low voltage, which is computer network technology, stage lighting, kitchen design, those kinds of things that don't fall into the purview of the architect.
Just to clarify that, so the, the architect engineering fees at two point five, it's essentially arrived at by applying a percentage to the construction cost, okay? You'll see further down this list, Bob, at the moment, there's a line item at one point two eight five for FFNE, for Fixtures Furnishing Equipment. So the ninety thousand dollars that's established here for the fee, for the so-called design or specification of the fixtures furnishing equipment, is in effect a percentage of the cost of the, of the fixtures furnishing equipment. So occasionally, it's not, not commonly done, but sometimes the costs of the fixtures furnishing equipment are put into essentially the construction cost, at which point the architect's fee goes up proportionally. So, so...
Are these all bidable numbers at that point? I mean, are, these numbers are about the bid to individuals...
These are, these are soft cost numbers.
Okay.
Typically bid soft costs, separate from bidding the architect.
All of the FFNE itself.
Yeah, the specialty subconsultants are carried underneath the architect's contract, but within the architect's contract. You would go out to RFQR slash RFP for the professional service of firework, design, a set of design professionals via the architect's contract. So most of these subconsultants would be within, would be an allowance within the architect's contract.
Peter, if your question is, are the tables and chairs competitive bidding question? The answer is yes.
Can we jump back up to one of the top ones, the design contingency and how it relates to architectural and engineering services? So, close to the top, we've got two point eight for design contingency, and of course, two point five for architectural and engineering.
Yeah, remember, this is an estimate based on conceptual...
Sure, it would, it's difficult to even discuss in detail, I understand.
Because it's, dare I say, more educated guess than actual estimate, that number is there for the evolution of design, for, for details, and those types of things that are not on the documents, that the estimator can't put a number on because they're not there, but will evolve over the course of time based on experience. So that number is put there to allow to the...
As simply a contingency, period then the start.
Correct.
And that is seven percent of the new construction cost.
Right. So the, the rest of these items are typically soft costs, and I can go through them. Threshold peer review is by building code, a building that's larger than a certain size, which is a hundred thousand square feet. A structural review by independent third-party structural engineer is required by code. So that's a soft cost that is required by the, by state statute. Site acquisition, of course. Hazmat survey and design is, because we don't have a new building, is actually fairly low. Hazmat survey and design could be half a million dollars if you're dealing with a large building, and you had to ascertain what was in it before you were demolishing. But then we've got hazmat monitoring, which would be site operations. Have an allowance there for an expectation that there might be some hazmat within soils that have to be dealt with. If it's not needed, it's not used. Commissioning is the third-party independent entity that is hired by the owner to ensure that the building's systems are designed and built according to the intent of the architect and the engineers. So he is there not just through the course of design, looking over the shoulder of the mechanical, electrical engineers, but he's there during the course of construction to make sure that the equipment is installed, set up, started up, and operates according to the documents, such that when you move in the building, there should be an absolute minimum of any fine-tuning, heat, cooling, etc. So it is a relatively new soft cost that has come into prominence in the past six, seven, eight years in Connecticut, but is well, well worth being used for.
Somebody like a clerk would still look over the job exactly that much?
No, it's, it's much more technical than that.
But that's basically what that will cover as well, or is there a different number in there somewhere?
No, there's, there's no clerk of the works here, because that's what the construction manager does. They, they are actually in charge of all the construction, they bid all the work, they hold the contract, and they execute the construction. When it's all done, they, they turn it over in a formal, technically documented way, as well as their keys to the owner. The commissioning agent is there to ensure that all the cooling systems, all the heating systems, all electrical systems, pumps, anything of a mechanical nature are operating the way they're supposed to.
Looks like special inspections.
That's not a great...
Yeah.
The next item, special inspections, is another code required item, there has to be a special inspector who is there to review such things as reinforcing steel in the foundations, structural steel, the connections to the structural steel, the roof connections, et cetera, and then he signs off at the end of the job, and everything is installed and employed in terms of the building structure, and of course, with the documents. Geotechnical services is a geotechnical engineer who assists in the design of the foundation. Demographic study is, is an allowance, in case we have to redo the demographic study that superintendent cost had done. It's not needed, it's, it goes away. Property survey is, that's what it says, survey of the property. Traffic studies for a traffic engineer, determine if there is perhaps a need for a traffic light, or how the traffic light would work on Route eighty-one. Moving expense, that's moving out of the old building into the new building. Then, then the actual purchase of FFNE. Technology equipment, that's all the computers, the servers, the routers, the player. Audio, audiovisual is video streaming, which is a projector and perhaps a smart whiteboard in each classroom. Some legal expenses, the bonding expense that I mentioned, that's the cost of borrowing money, that may or may not want to be revealed in this budget, some communities put it within the capital expense, some areas an operating cost outside of this budget. Builder's risk insurance is the insurance that the town carries to protect them from any risk during the course of construction. And bid document advertising printing is the process of publicly advertising to all the bids, and printing documents for the bidders to, to review and bid front. And then lastly, there's a owner's contingency, which is about four and a half percent, which is just a contingency for the owner, that in case there's something that comes up that you want to add during the course of the design that isn't bought, and I had another tennis court, something comes up, maybe there's more rock excavation than was originally anticipated, that's the pot of money that pays for those items. When the job gets nearer completion, and there's still sufficient owner's contingency left, sometimes it can be spent on other things, or it's not spent at all.
That's a four and a half percentage of what?
The total.
The total, the sixty...
New construction, always sixty-eight.
That fixtures, furnishings, and equipment estimate of one million, two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, is that based on the fact that nothing in the, in the old school is usable or transferable over, or is that, every bit is brand new?
That's the assumption at this time, that it would be all new. That's typically based on the occupant, number of occupants in the building, X number of students, obviously equates to X number of student tables and desks and chairs, teachers' desks, filing cabinets...
Like computers?
No, computers would be under the technology equipment, which is six seventy-four.
So you have to move, what's under the moving expense?
Because you're buying all new furniture, it's really just a box move, it's all teacher belongings.
What's your bonding number based on? You've got almost a million dollar thing.
It's, it's two percent, which is really just a guess, we don't, we don't know what the bonding cost is for Clinton. It's a plug number, it's the interest on, on the money you borrow.
So this is including interest?
That is the interest.
So it's not just your expense in a heating bond?
Right.
So that's bond council, bond agent, and interest?
That can't be a number for interest.
Oh, I like that.
Yeah, I love that, those interests.
Would take it.
For the books.
More?
Yeah. It, it is, I would have to look everywhere.
Just the interest of construction?
Typical bonding cost just for the town, or bond agent, and bond term, bond council, there's, there's no interest on that, when you bond.
We just did a refit today, it's bond council, bond agent. We did a bond sale a year and change ago, that's all we don't...
Okay, if, if you've got a replacement number that I can stick?
I don't have one right now, we could probably get out of there.
That would be helpful.
Is that owner's contingency included in the fourteen, seven subtotal?
Yes.
See, yeah, eight million dollars, seven point nine million in contingency overall.
Well, no, I mean, it can't, it can't be four and a half percent of sixty-eight, if it's included in the sixty-eight by point, so it's, it's sixty-five?
It's gotta be sixty-five.
Sixty-five.
But in, in total, with sixty-eight, you've got eight percent, or eight, eight million dollars in contingency. Seven point nine.
Okay.
Sorry, thank you.
Back up to the architect and engineering fees, that was a percentage of cost as well, was it?
Yeah, these, these are all percentages, that's a little over five percent, which is the approximate value of architectural services that we're seeing today. How professional services in terms of architects and construction managers are procured under the school construction grant is that the community has to go through an RFPQ, Request for Qualifications, slash RFP, Request for Proposal, which has a cost component to the process. That process can either be one step or can be in two steps. But the statute stipulates that the community shall hire the architect from one of the four lowest responding bidders, which is to say, it doesn't matter how many responses you get to your advertisement, if you get a dozen architects responding to be the architect for the new urban school, you're only allowed to hire from the pool of the lowest four. On the premise that you wouldn't necessarily want to hire the lowest bidder, because you would want to hire the bidder who's most qualified for your respective project. It's usually recommended that you do it in two steps. So you put out an RFQ, you get a number of responses, you narrow down responses to your top choices, based on criteria specified in the advertisement. And then from the shortlist, you would ask for a price, which would be the RFP. Then you're allowed to select from one of the four lowest of your shortlist, which means that you would be more or less happy with any of the ones that you bid, because they're on your shortlist, they're already pre-qualified enough. It's a little convoluted, the state originally wrote that statute for, for one fiscal year back, I believe, in oh-seven, perhaps oh-eight, that you had to select the lowest responding bidder. And there was a big outcry from, of any districts that you don't select a professional service based on the cost of loan. So the statute was revised to allow you to pick from the pool of the lowest four responding bidders. So, having said all of that, cost for architectural services used to be in the range of seven and a half to nine and a half percent, when everything was coming along, and there was a lot of work, more than five, six, seven years ago, a lot of architectural services have come down, so this number represents about five and quarter percent, which is about what we're seeing now. That was long when the answer...
Of course, the longer the process.
David, last week you asked for, for percentages, and I, this main document that I passed out is not an editable document, but I do have it in Excel form, the cover sheet, and I was able to add percentages, so you can see what they are on the right-hand column.
So the price for the construction manager's fees is pretty much the same as what you just described for the architectural services phase?
Works the same way.
Works the same way, bidding process is the same?
Yes. Did you, did you get the breakdown of general conditions and CM fees? No, it's, it's just a plug number at this point of seven and a half percent. The construction, the purchase of construction management services is based on three primary elements, general conditions, which is usually referred to, or usually meant to be his staffing cost, the cost of people to operate and execute the construction, the maintenance of construction of all of the entities within the building. That's far away the largest single number of, of the component of the CM cost. Then you have what's called general requirements, which are the office trailer and the other assorted costs, telephones, gas, and water to the, to this field office, those kinds of things, which is a much, much smaller cost. And then the third component is his fee, those two items are cost, or at or near cost. Then you have what's called the CM fee, and that is supposed to represent his profit. That is the number where most CMs, when you're in the bidding environment, will reduce their cost. Back when the construction industry was coming along, as I referred to with the architect, CM fees were in the three percent range, that's three percent of the cost of construction, a forty million dollars. Today, CM services can be by one and a half or less. So the purchase of both architectural and CM professional services is much more competitive.
So about when you take all your, you take your contingency for design, which is two point eight three, and you take your architecture engineering fees, after we talked about pre-referendum, you keep that out, add all your little subcontracted engineering and architectural fees, you come up with a six point five million dollar overall, between contingency for architecture engineering and the actual cost, which is getting closer to ten percent. So your contingency almost doubles, is close to being the same as what your actual was. Let me shake it out.
Yes, you could look at it that way. The contingencies are different pots of money. The design contingency, if you will, is for the, the growth and evolution of the building, which as the design goes through its three steps, schematic design, design development, construction cost, there's three primary phases of design that the architect goes through. If the design evolves and costs a little bit more, that pool of contingency would recover. The construction contingency belongs to the construction manager under his contract, for his use for things that, that should be in the building but aren't represented in the documents.
And I'm not even talking about construction contingency, I'm just taking your design contingency of two point eight, adding it with your engineering arc fees, plus all your sub-fees for design and engineering services, that comes up to six point five million dollars, which just pulls it down to ten percent. Okay. I'm just saying, it seems high, you said we're in the five to seven percent range, pulls it down to ten, we add them together.
I'm not sure what you're referring, five to seven, what?
Well, when you add them both together, if you're, if you're, if you're gonna have a contingency for design that is almost equal, so we're just short of what your...
Really, the design contingency isn't a fee, it goes to the architect.
That goes in the building?
It's building.
Traditional design, if needed?
No, no, no. Traditional, but let's just say during the course of design, a new program gets, a new program gets developed...
Lack of design.
They're not a lack of design.
No. Errors and omissions.
No, 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 no.
You love that stuff, Mike.
But, but, just as an example, during the course of design, a new program gets established at Morgan, and they need a specialty room to teach that, so there is a design involved. Just a, you know, off-the-cuff example.
You could have that figured out beforehand.
Yeah, no, so that, that's a bricks and mortar number, it's not a soft cost.
Okay.
Okay, so that, what that is, Bob was describing, so right now, we've met over, in the scheme of things, a relatively short period of time with your school people, and we know what we know about the school. When you hire an architect, there's gonna be an incredibly detailed educational specifications and programming skills, that's gonna uncover many more things. And much like this cost estimate is based on preliminary information, our design is based on preliminary information, and as that information fills itself out, it's gonna add some construction cost in here. That design contingency is not a fee to an architect, it's... That design contingency is not a fee to an architect, it's to cover things that aren't known yet about the design. And that design contingency goes to zero on the day when you go out to bid. Right? So you carry this contingency along and as things develop, you sort of account for those developments by drawing money away from the contingency. And if you've got money left over on the day you go out to bid, you don't need that contingency anymore. Your design's completely figured out. The construction contingency, on the other hand, right? So that's where the CM, it's day one on the construction contingency. So you carry that forward and by the end of the construction process, again, theoretically, if you haven't spent it all, then it's just money back to the town or to use without you. And the owner's contingency is just, it's just your rainy day fund for whatever might happen.
Better example might be suppose Clinton wanted to put a little gray on the roof to be a little bit more green. That would come out in the design. Wasn't there somebody in the soft cost that figures that out?
The architect.
Technology design, computers. Computers, projectors, soft, excuse me, smart whiteboards. Those kinds of things that are really teaching needs.
You know, what I noticed that this is still based on a building area of one hundred and thirty-five thousand square feet. Wasn't there some talk, I don't know, last meeting, that it was gonna be, it would be tucks into one hundred and twenty-seven thousand square feet?
That's the net gross.
That's the net gross.
Oh, okay. But you, I forgot. No, you're correctly remembering that I was, I was-
You're the inside building, he's the, he's the outside.
Right, right. And I was suggesting that there's a greater differential between the net minus than we're used to seeing. And I promised I would go back and look at that closely and have done so, and the numbers are, they hang out. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to come up with any additions.
Page one. All right. In looking at page one of the detail, you'll see the primary sections on how construction is broken down. Site services is basically the services of the course of construction. It was into the building, those are, those are soft costs to part of the cost of building, but not bricks and mortar. Then we get into what's called the bricks and mortar, which is the meat of the project. Site construction, all the site costs where we just referred to fields, concrete foundations, slab on grade, slab on deck, basingery, which are brick and block walls, structural steel, which are the columns and beams that make up the frame of the building. Miscellaneous metals are those things that do not fall into the structural steel category. For instance, metal stairs, carpentry, thermal moisture protection, doors and windows, finishes, specialties, equipment, specialty equipment that's inside the building, FFNE furnishings. These are furnishings in terms of millwork. Conveying equipment, meaning elevator, fire protection, plumbing, HVAC, heating, ventilating, and air conditioning, and electrical. Those are the primary trade breakdowns on how the construction manager would be into the various sub-elements of the building. And these are all the the next twenty-five pages are all the detail what makes up those individual divisions. With respect to site construction, that you can see is a fairly high number at seventy-two million. Where we refer to the fields being in there and where Wade Thomas spoke last week about a variety of the numbers that were contained in that concept estimate. I received an email from him at six fifteen tonight, but I'll paraphrase. He believes that the water main value, which is on the bottom of page three, which is in the estimate at a million dollars to extend the water main up to the site. He believes a more reasonable number is five hundred thousand to that line, thereby reducing the cost five hundred thousand under. In the middle of page four, you'll see stormwater system, stormwater management system. An allowance of eight hundred thousand dollars in the estimate, Wade believes that the more realistic budgeted number would be four hundred thousand, which would be an additional four hundred thousand dollar deduct, a reduction from this estimate. And he suggests a couple of other layer edits that would net out at about a million dollar reduction out of the site cost, based on his research since last meeting.
Just to clarify, I posed these questions to him earlier in the day. My question to him was, so, these numbers in this estimate represent worst case scenario, as it described to us last week. And I said, if everything broke in our favor, what would be the best case scenario? So the numbers he's sharing with us here, in his email to you, did he characterize these as his recommended numbers? Or the best case scenario of everything breaks away?
No, these are, these are what he's representing as edits to the, to the estimates that are realistic.
So, we have five hundred thousand for the water line that we'll give. And then the stormwater was four hundred thousand.
Four hundred thousand.
And then another hundred thousand somewhere else on those lines.
I don't think so.
So that means the total will go in the million. And then, yeah, that doesn't address the septic plant.
Correct. Right. At the moment, we're still holding the three and a half dollar allowance because of the waste water treatment plan. He is not connected with DEE yet.
Right.
To discuss that.
But we're optimistic and hopeful that we'll not have to build a plant and we'd be able to dispose of the wastewater.
Right, to the ground. Right. If that pans out, that's another one point five million dollar reduction to the site cost.
Well, no.
No, it's probably maybe-
He has one point five in there for the treatment plant.
Sorry.
So it's-
Correct. That includes the-
I think he said two hundred thousand is what would be the amount. So it could be a plus of one point three million dollars once. Or we say-
Five hundred thousand would be surprising. He is, he needs to run the concept by Michael Artaniky, so that the ground rules are known and then he can define.
Did he say anything about rock excavation?
Rock is not in the estimate. He suggested that carrying a budget for rock at twenty percent of the total excavation volume. He said we can quantify the rock excavation volume and finish with floor elevation, when finished floor elevations are more accurate than that. So that's, it's a little difficult to quantify at this time. Finished floor elevation, meaning a little bit of a set. We determine how deep you have to dig into existing ground, which would determine rock excavation. That might be something that David could take a
Guessing?
An educated guess at. Would say you would in a, allowance in for rock excavation now?
David said he was just gonna build a building up higher than, meaning we wouldn't have to worry about it.
It's probably unrealistic having that. Just based on visual evidence alone.
Now, the water line, when he lowered that estimate from a million to five hundred thousand, was that because he was planning on bringing in a different group? Or was that keeping it on the only one stump?
It's coming through the school. Connecting the water service to the main and glenwood road.
So that means he's looking at bringing in all the- So that makes it a reimbursable expense.
Utility connections are reimbursable on the site. Once you leave the site, they're no longer reimbursable. So whatever the distance from the end of existing water main to the site property line is a non-reversible expense. In only one property line.
Can you pipe through a little bit?
Sir?
The Peter's complex is, that's, is there any distinction between Board of Ed and town property?
Town is town, we'll make it work. It's all very, you know, there's imaginary lines running the same, the town takes care of this and the board would take care of that. Facility exterior property line, the town takes care of everything.
Well, any expense that you incur, as Bob says, within the property line, and here we're interpreting property.
Must reimburse.
Include all of that, is reimbursable, I think, if it's presented. But I'm thinking a little bit about the fact is that your thirty-two acre campus has now become something significantly larger. But that wouldn't- And the state will reimburse you for site acquisition costs at a normal percentage based on a formula of enrollment relative to the standard formula that they use, and I think it works, that's about twenty-six acres or something. So the thirty-two acres is a little bit over what the state would normally reimburse you for, for site acquisition costs. But you already own the rest of it, so it has no impact on it.
With respect to site acquisition, remember that the state reimburses to the higher reasons. The higher, higher to raise the school prime.
The tennis courts. Did you look at that number one? We were talking about that earlier today. So you're doing six tennis courts, two hundred, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Dennis, you were on the committee when we did the ones in mortar, what was it? I couldn't remember.
We ended up doing one forty.
One forty, it was one forty, okay. So that's, that's good, Jerry.
Yeah, I would imagine because, you know, this will probably be a little bit more intense than what we did here.
No matter, it was grinding on paper, reclaiming a grade.
I want to bring up the flagpole, the eleven thousand dollar flagpole. Sally brought to my attention. I'm just interested in what a ten thousand dollar flagpole involved with that.
Well, it's kind of like fifteen hundred dollar trash cans.
Right, right, okay.
The match. They blow up, they blow the wood.
Is that like a state, I mean, is that the number that some kind of safety?
Where is it?
It's on page eighteen. Flagpole's ground set.
Well, that's, I'm sorry, that's for three poles.
Oh, good.
All right, how about the federal?
Thirty-seven hundred dollar flag.
All right, three poles.
Yeah, I mean, the thirty-seven hundred is about right for a thirty-five or forty-foot fiberglass inter on all your.
I mean, I don't want a cheap flagpole. Maybe freedom. Freedom's a lot. I just, I started bringing that kind of thing out as we go through it. I hope that's the money we can get.
There might be a couple more.
Two other things I'll mention, one is when Bob was describing the FFNE budget while questioning what about reusing existing stuff. There's also a four hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollar allowance in here for theater and stage equipment. And we've investigated the vintage and quality of equipment that you have in the present space. Maybe something that can be reused, but at the level at which we're operating here, it's probably not a great idea to focus in on that too much. But just so you know, it's included in the construction cost, not in the FFNE.
I would think of all the equipment in that school, that's probably the least usable. That is probably the oldest and the most deteriorated, they've been putting players on with-
I understand it, right, Dave? I don't believe it's been updated for some time.
I was more concerned, quite frankly, I was, you know, the tech end of it. You know, we bought a lot of computers, quite frankly, in the last couple of years. We have a continual computer program. If you were buying, buying computers, and I was just hoping that some of them could be run up the street.
It could be, if they're less than three years old.
I would imagine, yeah, if we buy, like I said, two, three hundred thousand, not, not just from Oregon alone, but-
Every year?
Yeah, that's a good, we have our capital expenditure committee, since one into computers, system-wide is what we call it, and I don't know how many particular for more. There's probably some good equipment there.
Sure, smart boards.
Smart boards.
There's a number of things that, you know-
That have been bought recently, you're right.
To a senior city, but you know, we're talking, I realize ten thousand here, ten thousand there is wonderful, and we're interested in discussing the ten millions here.
Right, that's exactly right. You should get the millions.
Very difficult to do in a conceptual capacity. Thus, our problem. And you know, I suspect we could sit here for two hours and go through the line items. And I've got little questions between what's the difference between this kind of fill and that kind of fill for thirty thousand dollars, but it's not getting us anywhere. I understand your intent here is to protect us from laying an egg and throwing out something for potential referendum and find out we can't build the high school for whatever we put out there in front of the public, and we certainly don't want to do that. But on the same token, the numbers right here scare me to no end. And to some extent surprise me last week. And preoccupied a huge amount of my weekend. I like to think I can go through this, having looked at it and looked at it and looked at it and come up with between contingencies and some cuts and eliminations, seven, eight million dollars that hopefully would not be spent. Some of which I think is being, I guess you use the word conservative sometimes, I suppose we should be aware of. Some people translate that word to liberal, I, you know, how you approach your cost. But there's value to being that way, a worst-case scenario, just like the million dollars for running the water line as opposed to maybe five hundred thousand. I'm at a loss, I mean, I, I see the numbers as extraordinarily high and it scares me to no end. On the same token, I see the potential we're confronted with, with the potential property purchase having a remarkable amount of the recreation and educational facilities in essence on one campus or at least contiguous property is remarkable potential that we may never see again. Potential like that in this town. I'd like to see this work, I just don't know where to go from here. Get the numbers safely more easy to swallow.
I have a question regarding to the square footage numbers. And it seems to me that one of the things we've talked about is that our building is smaller than perhaps maybe other buildings we're maybe comparing this building to, to get numbers. Correct? Is that not true? So, these numbers that are based on square footage are based on similar sized buildings. I think that's my question.
So Bobby, you talked about escalation last week.
Yes.
If in fact, in past referendum, how sensitive, sensitive state and chose to go out and begin the RFP, RFQ/RFP process, shortlisting like the DOP, those professional services and all, they could go out and go on. all the states are going to go along. We could potentially say 1.6 million, using your first quarter, the first quarter 2015?
Yes.
There's something there, potential.
Yeah, that's on the premise that the architect is hired and released to design the building as soon as referendum passes, not waiting the full year for the state legislature to approve.
As soon as it passed referendum, behind the RFQ-RFP.
So in essence, not long after the state approves the project, which is June 2013, the design is done, and you can almost go right out to bid then.
And based on your comment last week, that you've never heard of a project that had been denied, I made a couple calls, and I've also been told that it had been denied in recent history, after it come past, it's a mental state.
So that would put a shovel in the ground in 2014, do him away with that second contingency. Excuse me. Second ex-essential.
So I think what David's saying, and what I'm looking at, just quickly going over some numbers, is that we're safe to whittle down that number a little bit. If we look at the 1.6 million for escalation, if we look at the wastewater a million, if we look at.
I keep the wastewater where it is right now, to get something more solid.
You have a million, and other site work, which is the water line, retention basin for this form of water.
The bonding expenses.
Yeah, I could find out exactly. Yeah, you go 20% on, it looks like 6,000 yards is the rock of excavation, 1,200 yards.
Does that figure out too, John?
If you're right, 50 grand. I think you have to do something with it, you know, it's just.
And then when you lower those amounts, you also lower the contingencies, market fees, construction managers fees, all as a percentage of that.
Between what Wade Thomas suggested, the third year of escalation, and the bond cost that's almost to that.
Not bad for half hour, let's do some more.
Well, David.
Yeah, those are the easy ones, I mean. Today, almost all of the, virtually all of the interaction between design and town have been with the end users, as opposed to a more direct relationship here. As it moves forward, how would that be inclined to work? Same way or traditional, without being specific, since nothing in this whole picture is specific. I'm talking, I hate to say it in a nebulous capacity, Jack, you?
Meaning what other constituencies start contributing to the program definition?
Yeah, it's great, I guarantee you, you know, you've come to me as an end user, I'm going to come up with some different ideas than perhaps the person paying for a project.
The things that traditionally get the public at large has the most significant input on are the things we have already taken rather significantly into account, meaning gym and auditorium. Those are the things that are most typically used by your public, and in fact, you've got gyms and auditoriums in here, that your school staff feels are more than they need, that your town feels very strong, so I think the big ones out there we've got input on will be the normal public presentation and hearing comment and things that be shared. It's quite unusual for the public to have a significant impact on the very specific educational program, and it's classrooms, and shop space, and that sort of thing. So generally, you hired a school superintendent's office and the school staff to understand.
This is probably a very difficult question, but given your last comment about the gym being perhaps a little larger than obviously the state would fund, and the specific needs of the school are, can you ballpark, just top of your head, give me an idea how much that's impacting our project about?
So the cost of the larger gym, you can round that up and say, you know, if you had one full size gym of sufficient size to accommodate appropriate number of spectators, you'd probably take 6,000, 7,000 square feet out of the building. So we can sort of plug in some square foot costs and do that calculation.
That square footage, I have to say, lower than the 399.
Yeah, so, I'm gonna say, you have to study these numbers correctly, and which square foot cost you want to plug in, but ultimately you're plugging in in the construction cost and make sure.
But you're talking in excess of a million dollars?
Yeah.
No question.
At the cost of the second gym, it's not more than a million dollars.
What I'd like to start doing is thinking in a somewhat different direction than, well, maybe for that difference, supposing it was just what the school needed, facilities wise, in an educational capacity, PE, that the school needs onsite, would it be cheaper in light of the fact that all of a sudden, everything's fundamentally on one campus to build a separate gymnasium, a mini field house, let's say adjacent to the current football field, which is on the Peters Complex property? Let's reduce the size of the school X percent, build what they need, and let's build a separate one there, we get everybody happy and save money.
Not clear on how we're saving money.
Well, I bet we could do, I mean.
Standalone building, it's got its own car.
Thereabouts.
Your own heating system.
Let me ask you a question, you said two gyms, I thought there was just one oversized gym.
There was, that you cut in half with the big one.
Yeah, it's a little bit of a nomenclature, essentially, it's the square footage is equivalent to two gyms, and there happens to be an operable wall between them. If you didn't make it operable, you'd say there were two gyms, so.
I understand, but that oversized gym is still less than the two gyms spaced that we have now.
Yes.
Right? So we did reduce the size of the gyms. We went from two gyms of Oregon, reduced it to one oversized gym in the new building, which we were going to draw or put a divider in. So already we sacrificed gyms, space in gyms. Don't make it sound like the town has kept their two big giant gyms, because we have them, our space wise.
But you have.
Well, I just want to get that clarified, because, you know, it makes it sound like, well, it's the townspeople that are adding this extra cost because we're demanding these two big super gyms. We've already, not me, personal, the people that were talking about gyms are probably even a little discouraged that they've gotten the lesser, you know what I'm trying to say? But to David's point, which we talked about before, maybe we have to go small. And we might have, but that would mean the town would get even smaller gyms.
I think David's point was, the state only allows one full size gym, and so the conscious decision to add a second gym has already been made, albeit slightly smaller in square footage than the current, it's still a premium over what the state allows.
Well, we don't have two gyms, we have one oversized gym.
Let's clear one thing up here, the state doesn't, unlike auditoriums, they say you're allowed to, we will pay for one half, for the number of seats that represent one half of your enrollment, that's it. They don't even really, are calculating square footage as much, they're just.
In the gym?
In the gym, they don't explicitly say, but their formulas for square footage make an assumption that a school of 600 students, relatively small school, is based on there being a single gym. But again, and I don't mean to suggest that the school staff isn't hugely in support of the idea of there being an oversized gym or a gym divided in half, it's not something being foisted on the school by the town. I think you all speak in one voice in that, it's a real benefit to you in a million ways. But what you have right now is a 9,000 square foot gym and a 7,000 square foot gym. What we're giving you is almost a 14,000 square foot gym, so under the major spectator, you have the opportunity now to host tournament events that you can't in your present facility. So it isn't, you're not just giving something out, you're giving up something, you're gaining something on that.
No, because David and I had had that conversation just about a week ago, that we would have to downsize that gym even further, which would really create a lot of hardship around, but if.
And to that point, I'd like to say that it's at a terrific size right now because it accommodates two full size basketball courts. You take one of those and shrink it down, now suddenly you've lost that functionality, unless you start talking about half court game or something. So it's a real good size, and I think it's really well thought through, and again, I think your townspeople and your school are people are one voice on this point. The auditorium is something you can make bigger or smaller by a seat at a time, whatever ultimately makes sense for you.
Yeah, and, you know, again, I think I talked to you about that, you know, I mean, we were hoping that we could stay as close to, I think, what we are now, 700, but, you know.
Get the same student, the whole student body into our auditorium, that's what we're looking at.
Yeah, I mean, you know, maybe.
Or we have 650.
I think we're closer to 650 now. When we introduced the scene shot and some other things, we made the stage bigger, we took away some seats from the process, but we still have something that's more than twice the size of the state we paid for.
I think we've had discussions at this committee level in the past, and I thought we'd come to an agreement that we wanted to try to include a full size gymnasium, something that's going to provide us with what we currently have, and the same thing, I think the size of the auditorium is something that we agreed on, that we want to provide a full size auditorium, because it's a town facility, not just a school facility. I think what I'd like to do is kind of look at some of these numbers, and it's going to have to take another week or so until Wade gets back on us, but, I mean, we've identified a few things that we could, we would like, I think, to cut from the proposal. I mean, I think we've got a number that's a little bit more palatable, I mean, what we want to do is provide for the town the most cost effective school that we can. We're looking at some of these contingencies, and I would be hopeful that we would be able to build this thing without using as much of those contingencies as we have to, and that would be my charge as a committee chairman, is to be responsible with the town's goal. But I think we have to.
I think you could try it the exact other way and say that to disregard, I would say that design contingency is too many money that's already spent, we just don't know it yet, but that's just my opinion. It's, you have to.
And Bob's people here are, these are based on many, many years of experience of doing this, so I totally agree.
I'm not suggesting that we eliminate that, I'm just hopeful that we don't have to use all.
We still have the number at the bottom, when I even thought about it, 1.3 for the maintenance facility, the top of the 685.
We are going to have to have a discussion about that.
That's got to be part of whatever is voted on, just we have to find a place for these guys.
You're right, and, you know, I saw where I said that add.
It's a little high.
Add alternate.
I was going to start the discussion, but my committee members started me, and didn't really like the way it was positioned on that piece of property, and to me, it seems like a maintenance facility would be better kept on the rear of a property or on another property in town.
There's still a cost of.
There's still a cost that we have to put in there for a maintenance facility, but I don't think it has to be anywhere near 100,000. I'd like to entertain discussion for the committee, we still have to think about that, I don't think it's something that we have to decide on now, but there's an option to put that building on another piece of town property, or somewhere else on this piece of property, but I don't think 1.3 million dollars is what we need to spend on maintenance facility.
Well, you remember when we walked that site, my first comment was.
There's a building on it.
There's a nice little, I don't know what we need for maintenance to say, building, but there was a cute little house tucked in the back by the water that seemed to be up to date pretty well, and that it would definitely be offices there, I didn't see any garage area, but if you could attach garages to it, I think it'd be a heck of a lot cheaper than 1.3. And the building looked like it was well maintained, matter of fact, there's pictures of another property type of situation there here that David once gave me, of, I don't know which one, is it this one? Yeah, the stone, I think, the little one. So, I mean, it's, there's an, there's an option there, there's an option that, I was a little surprised when I saw that myself, that 1.3 for a little whole new complete building down there, when, as Willie says, that's got to be added in sooner or later because the people are going to say, well, that's fine, but what were your plans for that building?
No, I mean, I think those are totally fair comments, and I think I presented it that way, but this is the kind of deluxe version, looking at the site land and seeing some opportunities, perhaps to use that maintenance facility, particularly the garage structure, in some collaborative way with the shop program, and maybe we minimize the auto shop space and find a way to do a collaborative thing where, so that's an ambitious idea, and may indeed not be the right thing, and a much less expensive pre-engineered steel building at the perimeter of the site for, you know, 600,000 or something might get the job done, and I think that's perfectly reasonable.
If there's, if it's used for a shop, or school facility for use, does it, do we get any benefit from that from the state interest in coverage?
Well, we're grateful, actually, we kind of want to go the other way with it, we don't want to count it in the square footage of the school because it's just a further space penalty. All I'm saying is it allows us maybe to reduce the size of the auto shop in the school itself, and we've got this separate facility, and maybe there's, again, some sort of collaborative thing going on that allows them to share that space in some way. We have to build this facility, so maybe it can be used to the benefit of the school, but no, there's just no way to reget into the school reimbursement.
Fox, I never saw a budget that didn't get used up.
Thoughts about the maintenance building?
Compared to what we're, I mean, to Peggy's point, yes, we'd be fools not building contingency, and it's professionally done with lots of years of experience, but, wow, you know, no matter where we can shop a little bit here, I mean, I think we've got to really look at doing some figuring out to get this budget down, and do it safely and responsibly, and yes, we can play with the maintenance building, and we can come up with some very creative ideas, we could be looking at the high school and figure this out. We put it at numbers that are right here, even though we can hope to save 6 million dollars in contingency, it'll get spent. The nature of the game, every budget I ever saw, bam, it disappears, does it not?
I've built about 40 schools so far in my cohort, and the vast majority come in within several hundred thousand dollars of the budget, so did we deliver the.
Did it to 98% or did it?
On or under budget, yes. Only once has that been significant, it was one project at the very beginning of the construction downturn in 08, came in 5 million under budget. You can't count on that happening. So to your point, I'm agreeing, the budget does get considered.
You said previous, when you first started last time, you could cut the building square footage down to 227, this is by.
Karen, I'm looking up those, but yes, yeah.
And it seems to me that was obviously cut, the budget would be in square footage. Fox, on that, I'm just.
You're correct, at 300 dollars a square foot, when you can start cutting feet, that's where you make a major impact. The project, the state allows 115,000 square feet, that's based on student population, school's at 127, that's a 12,000 square foot premium that we have in total, there are six or more thousands of feet of that in this gym, and you've probably got another several thousand.
Three, four thousand.
In the auditorium.
So it's really the gym and the auditorium. My other question is, what are the penalties? My other question is, what are the penalties to our reimbursement percentage? Is that how those penalties work?
It's a, it's a prorated penalty. If you are ten percent over the square footage, you've got penalized ten percent in the reimbursement dollars.
So, do we know what percentage over we're at right now? You just said...
Yeah, we're about ten percent over. I want to give a raise that you can zero reimbursement for that ten percent. Right? So, the state will reimburse you ninety percent of what you would have gotten ordinarily?
For that, overage, or for the whole part?
If you build right on the allowed square footage, you're going to get this percentage. If you build ten percent more area and incur ten percent space penalty, you're going to get your X percentage minus ten percent.
A minute ago, David said the gym is all part of fourteen thousand square feet.
Two thousand seven hundred square feet.
Fourteen thousand.
Yeah, fourteen thousand.
Whacking. I mean, what's this gym costing us? I'm trying to think outside the box a little, but take it out, and that brings us down pretty close to the potential of meeting the state criteria for reimbursement, which would take us from what number to what number about?
Twelve thousand over.
Gym, gym average, probably, competition.
We're twelve thousand over now.
Yes.
So, we just whack the gym, that puts us two thousand under, gives us a little room to play with wrestling facilities or something.
Just to be, I just hope, how do you think the whole gym? Just, just be creative for a few minutes. Dennis, hold on, now, how much did that just save us if we did it? And I'm not out of my mind, I promise.
Twenty thousand.
Okay.
Four and a quarter, that's three hundred.
Four million, four and a quarter million. And does that include the increase in the state reimbursement? Do we not now that we've entered, well, that saves us four and a quarter million in what capacity?
Oh, bricks and mortar.
Bricks and mortar.
Yes.
But it also puts us in a new category for state reimbursement, correct?
You do away with the space penalty.
Of space penalty, which is saving us something, or you're at a percent...
Right.
Which is, how much?
Thirty-four percent of the total cost.
Well, Dennis, here's a good...
No, no, I'm just looking at one thing here.
So, now we stick the gym next door and spend two million dollars on our own property.
One twelve net, it translates to one hundred and fifteen gross, but the state is one hundred and twelve thousand square feet.
Hundred and twelve.
But if you're looking at the one hundred and thirty-five thousand square feet, you've got to get that down to hundred, the state only needs to get that down to one hundred and fifteen. They're not going to penalize you for that exterior wall thickness. So, think one hundred and fifteen.
His figure.
Correct.
The outside figure, we have to get down to one fifteen from one thirty-five right now, right?
Correct.
So, that's how much, how many square feet? That's twenty. And you said the gym takes up how much of that twenty?
Well, again, considering we're mixing net and gross here, okay.
Nine, so there's a heck of a lot more than just that gym in there that's causing this thing to escalate.
A little bit.
Yeah. I mean, I know everyone wants to keep away from that gym.
I want to look at building this high school and maybe thinking, okay, if the collective cost of this gym is X, can we move sideways and look at a separate gym that we build later, or at the same time, on immediately adjacent property? Could the school use that? Would it work in conjunction with park and rec and everything else, and start to look at numbers there? You know, what are we dealing with? Is it going to cost more, is it going to cost less? I don't know.
To carve the gym out of this project would definitely reduce the cost of this project. I can't give you the bottom line here, there's more to it. But, to build, to build that gym later or on another piece of property means that the town would incur the entire cost of that gym without benefit to the school construction and the...
Summarizing, right.
Including designing and the...
How many squares?
So, you would, in essence, increase the cost of the construction, maybe, or kind of that scenario? I suggested something that David advised me about getting, taking the auditorium out of the facility. And whoever put a stipulation and whoever purchased the piece of property where the land is now, and built a school, that they would have to build, you know, and it's done, it's not like it's never been done, like a corporate, whoever buys it has to do like a public theater. So, whatever it is, when they're building, say it's like a mall across the street from there, whoever it is, as part of stipulation of the purchase of that property, is you have to build like a public theater, and we, the school uses it, the town uses it, it's, they can advertise or whatever, you know, whatever theater it might be, and when the school is not using it, or the town's not using it, they can use it to even make money, whatever, I don't know if they're going to make that much money, but if you use it as some kind of thing where basically they're responsible for it, and when you're building a, you know, mall or something like that, I mean, the price, the long one for them, or maybe we negotiate with the land cost, I don't know, but somehow take it out of the, I was trying to get rid of the square footage, plus reimbursement and stuff, and still keeping our public theater at, say, seven, eight hundred square, I mean, you know, seats. Some, I'm not going to use the example like the Katherine Heffernan thing, you know how they use that, kind of for a lot of different things. So, this way, take that part out of it, maybe get rid of your square footage, or be able to use the square footage someplace else that might be a little bit more important or whatever, and have them incur the cost to it. For someone building that, it's not going to be a tremendous amount of cost for, you know, a company that would be, you know, building a mall or whatever it may be, and it could be a nice feature thing for that center or whatever ends up being in the end product. But I was taking out of the side of the box last time, I didn't go with Dave and say, let's get rid of the gym and put something else in. Say, kind of, I like it, I like it, you know, I see upsides, downsides.
Let me tell you, this is the direction we need to be thinking. Yeah, a group of people talking, why don't you leave the old auditorium there somehow?
Well, that's where my initial thought was, but obviously it's in the wrong spot. This way, you can, in their design for the, whatever they build there, it could be a tour, some kind of feature, whatever, I don't, but it's just a thought. Because when I saw this price, I'm like, you know, we got, we got some good thoughts. So, you got to go with something, you know, not eliminate gyms altogether, build them differently, but if someone else can incur some of the cost, it might be, and for us to get the benefits of reimbursement if it helps with that, because, you know, we're not, less square footage and so forth, or whatever. But I'm just saying, they have enough, you know, other schools don't have, a lot of them don't have theaters or whatever, and they, you know, just for their immediate assemblies and stuff like that, a gym of fourteen thousand square feet or however many square feet you said, probably more than enough to have a school assembly.
It's called a gym and tour.
Right. So, if you incorporate those just for stuff to do within the school, it's fine, you know, even if we have a graduation or something in Morgan, it's in the, it's in the gym, you know, they set up a chair or a folding chair and stuff, so, I don't know.
State penalizes you if you go over that magic number, square footage, is there any incentive to have a school coming below, or is it just...
Higher percentage.
Yeah. Just figured I'd ask, I mean...
That's good.
I like that, we're coming up with new ideas. We had a lot of these conversations already, you know, keep the gym in the auditorium, build on the other side.
Right.
But we went through, we've been through this for eighteen months, where we sat down with the community, and they told us what they wanted.
They also told us the price of fifty million dollars too, which we are way on and out...
It was forty-nine.
I know.
I mean, if you're looking, parent apples, apples is forty-nine oh. And if you want to add contingencies to some renovation project, love to see those, because we don't know what they are. And we talked about that eighteen months ago, with PCBs and asbestos. But if we're going to say that we're going to cut the gym, I mean, it's fine if we can save something here and build a fieldhouse, that's fine, and it'd be great if we had a potential buyer say, yeah, we'll build the auditorium for you, we'll call it the dentist or something, and everyone can come to watch a show at the dentist, and we can put it anywhere in town. We don't have to put it there, and they can build whatever they want. But I don't think they're going to want to build something with an auditorium in the middle of it. But here we are, here we are, wherever it goes. I mean, they, we tell them to build it somewhere else, we got our auditorium. That'd be great, I'd love for them to come tell us that. I still want that big buyer to come in and tell us they're going to pay twenty million for it, and then all of a sudden, this gets real easy, right? We can build whatever we want. But in the end, we spent a lot of time coming up with five things that neighboring towns did wrong, and we did, we're doing them right. And that includes an oversized gym that we value, a big auditorium, there's a cafeteria next door, and everybody's embarrassed about it. I don't want to go and pitch a building that I'm embarrassed about, and that's what we're talking about. We're going to shrink this thing down again, and then we're going to go and say, oh, it's fifty-two million, but it's not the building anyone wants. So, we're burdened on either end. So, I would rather go with the big number and say, this is what you asked for, and have to tell us no. I'd rather sell that. I'm not going to sell a building that is not what the town wants, it doesn't replace the current Morgan, and it saves us a couple bucks. If we have to go back later and say, hey, guys, you know, it really is too expensive, then we have to do that. But this, I mean, we've been through, I don't know if we were listening to them, but people stood up, and David's saying it, I hear him saying it, he has to sit down and take all that input, and I got lists of things that have to be done. And I learned a ton about that building, and those guys in the bunker and that whole thing, and where's that going to go, and, but this is the building that the town asked for. And I think we should give them a chance to decide whether or not it's too expensive, not us. You know, and I don't, and then we're wasting time. Again, I know you always talk about wasting time. If we go back to that little building, little gym, we're wasting time. Because when I talk to people, I say, look, we got the right building. I would love, about contingency, I would love that contingency to be the solar panel. And, you know, it might be, but I can't say solar panel, I'm saying contingency now, contingency. Smartboards, if I tell people there are smartboards, that's one thing. If I tell them contingency is another, but please, we were all on the same page with this, weren't we? That we wanted the right building, and this is what we've gotten. And so, my question was, the seating in the gym says five hundred and seventy-five, said five hundred and seventy-five seats on page twenty-one. I was, you know, when we were having that conversation, it was, you know, David was doing calculations of like eleven hundred when you opened it up and had the balcony. So, that was my concern in this, is that Fox seventy-five is not the right-sized gymnasium. So, can we talk about that one? I'm sorry, I, I needed to come out.
I'm right to say it. I mean, because you're right, we're stuck with that eighteen months, right? Other towns have made that mistake, and we won't say them publicly, but, you know, there's one pretty close to us, and that's all you hear now. Gee, boy, did they make a lot of mistakes for all the money they spent. And you're right, Peter, I think to a certain point, you're right. The people invest for certain things, and, but, I can tell you, I think I also agree with David, that I don't believe that they'll go for sixty-eight million dollars, I can tell you that.
But to your point, I think that it's important to distinguish what those, how much more this is costing us because of what we want. That's all that I wanted to be able to put in place. I mean, because I feel that that's, that adds value to the project, because you're saying, well, this is, right?
I know, but renovating that building, it's how we started, right? Let's get back to what we said, renovate the building, well, it's going to cost us more to renovate one hundred and sixty thousand square feet, isn't it? So, let's cut the gym off. People would never go for that. It's, that's unreasonable, but we're paying a huge penalty for that, guys, come on, we can't have two gyms. That's what we're saying to this building that we value, the things that we value are put into this building, and now we're in backtrack now. And I think if you go all the way back to the drawing board, then let's say it to every other option. Well, come on, that's too much, that's too much. But if we're going to do it right, I mean, I, I think David's point of, let's take it out of there and put it somewhere else, if we can get the reimbursement and then this builds up to six million on our own, that's bigger and better, okay, that's great, but now we've got to get a cost estimate for a fieldhouse, you know, and how long are we going to keep people on the hook for this? They've told us what they want. We spent hours taking input, and I don't know what we're listening to, but, but I understand, but any other option, you could, you could always do the same thing. That, we have two huge gyms now, eighteen, whatever, sixteen thousand square feet, should we renovate those? We have hallways, let's measure the hallways, let's renovate those hallways. That's a ridiculous amount of hallways to renovate. For what, hallway space? Come on. We're here on the precipice of this thing with a ton of work. We've been doing a ton of work on this, and now we're going to back it up two years? I don't want to do that. I understand the number's high, it's terrifying, hopefully we, you know, skim off eight million here because we make some decisions and move forward with that, this and that. Well, whatever.
Might be sweet.
I don't even, I say, we're up four, down three.
Sellable with sixty million, maybe.
Right, no, well, it's not sellable without the things that they asked for, it's not.
I agree.
But anyway, back to the seats.
How many seats do we have in the gym?
If I'm at the gym, I can bet, I'm not sure how that five seventy-five...
That doesn't belong there, right?
Seven hundred.
In the auditorium.
Page twenty-one.
In the auditorium.
Are we at the auditorium?
Yeah, he's talking about the gym.
Gym.
He's talking about the gym.
You did get the binder out with the balconies and the other gym, I was thinking a thousand, we're talking C I A C championships and things like that.
Correct.
Right, weren't we?
Yeah.
Again, we haven't done a detailed calculation of spectator seating potentially in the gym area, but I have indicated there are two designated areas with bleachers that's going to be relatively easy to calculate, and then, again, we have, it's surrounded by all this perimeter corridor space with look downs from above and the cafeteria which overlooks it. So, yeah, can you accommodate a thousand people in there? I'm confident that would be the case. Some combination of standing rooms, loose chairs, bleachers.
That's where that architectural contingency comes along.
Yeah, that's a, that's a conceptual...
It's all conceptual, right? It's all conceptual.
By the way, I might have to agree with you, Peter. What if it was eight hundred, but seven, seven, what's funny is I got a couple emails, I didn't get them about the auditorium, I didn't get them about the classrooms, I got them about the gym seats, and here we are, going to shrink the gym. Right? I mean, it's, and we could do this, but that five seventy-five, we should have a number out there that we can move forward with.
Okay, so, okay.
So, that's, well, we...
There's two sides to that coin. We can put in probably as much later seating as you want or need. The gym walls may have to move a little bit.
You have to be a little bit later, just can't be like that.
The other side of that coin is, there's something called limited eligibility in athletic facilities, the fields, in fact, and gym seating, excuse me, yes, gym seating, come under the limited eligible for reimbursement category, which means the state pays you half of your normal reimbursement rate for those items.
It's a new one. Yeah, there we go. Yeah. Nebulous. There's another, yeah, there's another little wrinkle.
Okay, all right.
I mean, you know, the fields, I mean, quite frankly, the fields will end up being, for the most part, practice fields, because they do have, we have other premier fields throughout the town that they usually play their varsity sports at.
And that's different, that's a practice.
You know, so the fields, I can see, but now, you know, like Pete's already, all of a sudden, now, we're going to get, you know, what are we going to get, two, like just for physical ed-type gyms? Or a physical ed-type gym, just enough for the kids to do their physical ed requirements, but there won't be any really basketball games going on in them?
No, no, the gym is reimbursed at full reimbursement rate. Gym seating is at half the reimbursement rate.
Right, so we're looking at the forty thousand dollar number that is put on here, but, yeah, it's not perfect. I'm going to, Architect Homie, he's confident that we might be able to get a thousand seats.
Thousand people.
Thousand people.
Thousand people.
How many seats, well, how many seats?
Don't have an answer. You're going to, okay. Standups.
It's an important, it's an important question, okay?
Well, no, he said standups, I mean, standing up on that balcony.
Look at that.
You know...
It is. We got one, two, or five.
I mean, how many in Morgan now?
What's that?
How many can we fit in Morgan? They pack it.
I...
No, I know there are four, that's not...
Yeah, right.
Yeah, right.
Right.
Do we have to hold it for a half hour or two? Two, three, one, two.
So the gym is illustrated. This is in the old position. Partitions are retracted against here. Here is the spectator sport court right in here. Here is now the bleacher seating pulled out from underneath this balcony area. Some additional seating over here, some seating over here, some seating over here. So, so if one is doing a count of seats that are explicitly devoted to spectators, I would add up all of that. But in addition to that, we propose this old area, which is now, I'm, I'm a level above here now, and I'm looking out over this. And maybe these are retractable glass partitions, maybe it's open, you know, there are various ways to handle that. And then the cafeteria over here, again, that concept that one can enter the school here, go into the cafeteria area, and then descend down on these retracted bleachers to get to the elevation of the court, thereby facilitating some, you know, halftime events occurring up in here. That's all allowing for the possibility of accommodating a much larger group of people than just actually sitting in those bleachers. And, and, and again, is, tries to be a creative way of not, if, if you insist on a thousand people sitting in a bleacher, you gotta make the building, the gym bigger. And I say that's not necessary. That the number of times that's gonna occur for you is perfectly, in fact, it's wonderful to fill this whole place up and have people in overlooking things from corridors and all, that's exciting. That's a good thing. And it'd be silly to build this backyard gym, right? So you could accommodate a very rare bleacher.
Do you think you could sit about four hundred in those bleachers?
Yeah.
Five seventy-five. I don't need, but that wasn't enough.
Probably more, but, but let's run the numbers.
About five seventy-five sitting down in the seats?
I'd like not to commit to that number right now, but I'm happy to run it.
That's the number.
I'm just gonna say, because you know, let's face it, the average crowd in Morgan, we don't have games like when Fairfield Prep is playing Notre Dame, West Haven, or somebody like that. We have Cog Choc playing against Morgan, and maybe we, like Willie said, get three, four hundred people in there, tops, two, three hundred.
Is that what you think you're...
I, I don't know, I mean, I haven't been relatively, had them all game leading.
You can get close to five hundred and fifty in there now?
Need to be able to get the student body.
Uh, in your present gym, how many, can you accommodate them there now? Okay, so that's a nine thousand square foot gym, and it sounds like we can get, you know, five hundred plus in there now.
Well, we got six hundred descended in the school.
This is a thirteen thousand, fourteen thousand square foot gym. We obviously can fit easel. Easels.
Okay. Nine thousand square meters versus fourteen thousand.
We got a much bigger gym, we'll fit more people.
Okay, that's fine.
That's good. Long as they can sit down, long as the kids, like you said, they want all the student body to be able to sit down, that's great.
But I think those are, again, those are some specifics, and a lot of these specifics are details that we're gonna be looking at once we pass this budget, and then you get into more specifics. But it's true. We have to make a decision one way or the other, and, and I think, I mean, what Pete said, and I agree with him a hundred percent. We've had these discussions before when it came to renovations. We have these discussions when we're talking about a new school. I think we know the tenor of the town. They want an oversized gym, or two gyms, or whatever we can provide that's gonna be similar to what we have now, and they want a full-size auditorium. And to take them out of the building is doing the opposite of what we're trying to do by moving this school to a new location where we can have a whole campus set. We're not gonna want our kids to move from their school to another site for, to, to go to the auditorium. There's a lot of activities that take place during the course of the school day that they use the auditorium for. And the same thing with the gymnasium. You don't have your gym classes during the school day if a gym is located on a different site. I just think we have, I, I mean, maybe we aren't happy with the number, but again, that's because we had a different number in mind. A number that wasn't based on doing the educational specs and coming up with a hard pass number. We have that number now. It is what it is. Sorry. We have a different site that's costing us a little bit more, but it's hard to put a number on, but we're gonna get back then. We sell that old piece of property, and that's something that has to enter the equation at some point. That is conceptual, but, I mean, Pete said twenty million dollars. A conservative estimate would be five million dollars. I would think it would be somewhere in between there, as to what the town's gonna get back for that site. And then that doesn't consider what the tax advantages to the town will be when somebody builds something there. I, I'd just like, as a committee, to move forward, have David start working on plans to present to the town. I don't think we can delay any longer. I mean, we, we, we set a date for a referendum, we tried to set a timetable for a referendum towards the end of March. We're, we're gonna be hard pressed to meet that right now, because we're already behind from what we had hoped. I know we have to work on the numbers, and we've done some of that tonight. And maybe David and Bob can get back to us with some of the suggestions that we've made, and make some adjustments and see where we go, and we can continue to fine tune that number.
We took about three and a half million out of that.
And that still leaves the subject issue.
Yes.
I'd just like to say, I came across as being angry with all of you from the, I...
Hell, yeah. I am, I know, well, I, I might have gotten a little vocal, but I'm just, you know... I'm honored to be in your presence, and you guys have worked so hard, and I, I just... Find out what people want.
Can I ask a question to kind of... We skipped over too fast, and Pete got all going there, and now I wanna go back a little ways. We've, we've heard a ton about, you know, the gyms, and we've heard a lot about the auditorium. But, in my mind, I guess when I look at this for the technology and the equipment and the specific people that come in to design that space, and the money that we're allotting for that, to me, the academic part, um, sorry, is... We all know how fast technology is changing, and we won't even be building the school for two or three to four years. Are these numbers, do they have the built-in, I mean, you guys have been building schools all this time, right? By the time we actually build the school, is this figure gonna be anyway right for the technology? And what about the science labs? I mean, the science changes, but we're not hearing about the academic part of the school. Everybody's more worried about how many seats we have in the gym, and I wanna make sure that we're gonna be cutting edge for a couple of years before Rob's leak. And, I mean, I know you've built a lot of schools, and we're depending on your expertise to make sure that we're gonna be up to speed, even if we're not building this for three to four years. This money that's set aside, do you think is appropriate, or?
Yes, uh, the science and technology is constantly evolving, and what you see here are the costs to design today's design and purchase, today's science and technology. The next generation, or three or four generations down the road, three or four years down the road, of science and technology will be that day's typical. And so the cost to buy cutting edge today is the same, it's gonna be about the same cost as to buy then. As in, that technology costs are the one thing that goes down in construction. Computers, when we were equipping every classroom with a computer, or multiple computers, ten years ago were two thousand dollars each. Now they're about six hundred dollars each. So, so that is one area that, moving forward, the cost tends to de-escalate even.
Again, I'd like to ask David to proceed. He's delayed until we've given him the go-ahead to do so, and everyone is in agreement, or if not, let's get a motion on the floor that to, uh, for David to proceed to preparing to, uh, provide the public with a presentation.
I move that we give David Thompson the go-ahead to prepare a presentation before the town of this conceptual design and, um, cost estimate for a new building.
On this cost, that's a discussion, yeah?
You mean a motion, okay? Somebody has to second motion, and then we can discuss it.
I second.
Thank you. Discussion about...
Anyone wanna amend it to not the cost estimate? Or some variation?
We should discuss it, I mean, yeah. I'd be inclined to agree with you if you were to take out the cost estimate, but we have no other cost estimate. I mean, we're still working on it. I mean, we're, we're looking at, we're changing it.
The things that are in play right now, however, assuming we're not talking about gym and auditorium and classrooms and all that, those play no role in our ability to proceed ahead with the design. Your decision about whether to authorize the architect next year, whether to do a wastewater treatment plant, what utilities costs are, plays no role in anything that you would be authorizing us to do. So you could say, we're just authorizing David Thompson Architects to proceed ahead with the design as it currently stands, and just don't comment on the cost estimate.
Indeed, it remains conceptual design. You know, you're, you're selling an idea, you're not selling a specific building.
What, what you, what you wouldn't wanna do is authorize us to move ahead with that. If some of you are still feeling like, no, I'm not convinced about the gym or the auditorium, or the classroom counter, or any other aspect of the design, because we wouldn't wanna be preparing renderings and then be told, no, that's, we'd wanna make a change.
Discussion?
I'd be happy to amend the, the motion. I'd be happy to. I'd recommend.
Mend the what?
Okay. Um, I'd like to amend the motion to state only that we're asking David Thompson Architects, architects, to move forward in preparing a presentation for the conceptual design and the presentation to the town. Out of town here? Out of town here? Just the town.
Is that right?
And then in the interim, we can move to rest.
Okay.
We can do that as a separate motion.
And this basically says that we're not gonna change the conceptual design in any real effect from what he's presented to us. I mean, we have discussed a little bit about gyms, we have discussed the auditorium, so that's gonna put this to rest, because when David starts planning this stuff out, preparing for a couple of presentations, those are gonna be included. I'd be able to say, no, we, no, we decided to do something else. And we never really came to a consensus, I don't think, as to what we want him to do with the maintenance building.
As long as it's not, you know, incorporated within the building itself, I think that's, it's not included in the school costs, and therefore...
One of the parts that you showed it kinda right there in front of the school.
That part, too.
Any further discussion?
Well, I, I'd like to say that through this whole process, when we asked the town to participate in our presentation, they came out in droves. I don't know the last time we had five hundred people come to a town meeting, would you believe it, Tommy? But, in addition to that, when we asked the town to show up to vote for the conceptual design itself, uh, they came out, we had two hundred and fifty people show up that night, and two hundred and twenty-one of them voted in favor of it. I think they wanna see what we produced, and this is their opportunity, because this is our responsibility at some level to show them what we worked on.
Any questions? Seven? Second? Jeff? Dennis?
I just feel uncomfortable about going ahead with that figure. Wait for the vote.
Thank you.
Well, I agree with you. It costs what, this is how much it costs to give you the school that you say you want, and that's, that's the best.
I think we're, oh, oh, absolutely, I mean, I'm, I'm... It's burning, Ted. And no question about it.
Mr. Geno?
I don't think I've been here long enough, honest, to really think of, you know, because like Pete said, you know, when you guys talked of, whatever, the school of public, I haven't been here long enough, I think even the five state.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor to, uh, get David working on, on his plans. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
One.
Two. I'm ready to, and I'm not one to just abstain in any way. I'm bothered by the numbers a lot, and I don't, until there's more time to look at how to whittle them down, which I think we have to do. I mean, I realize this motion's been passed, but, you know, we have to.
You're abstaining. Okay, so the motion passes, two, three, four, five?
Two.
To two, and with one abstention. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. We have to send another meeting to a pass.
Okay. It's good to work on it.
David, you wanna look at your calendar and make a suggestion?
We scheduled it earlier, but it did have our next meeting date, but we had a three-week period planned.
Well, we're not one to come back and talk more about the cost estimate, but yeah. I think that's the big pull-up for everybody right now.
So, um, so I'm, I'm...
When do you think we will know where the subject?
Supposed to go finish up tomorrow, or Thursday, with the rest of the boards.
Okay.
And it's a matter of getting it done, and talking to the people.
Oh, yeah.
Do you think we can have something forced by Tuesday or next week?
No, we say nothing, we met one on last Thursday, so it's not...
I thought it was two weeks from the first meeting.
He said two to three weeks of the time.
Yeah, and last Tuesday, we had one again last Thursday.
Two weeks from last Tuesday, so.
Alright. Do we wanna go, so, so next week is the thirty-first. The following week, Tuesday would be the seventh. Does that make sense? Who's that?
Project workshop.
Yeah, water plant is project workshop. Does it have to be on a Monday or a, uh...
Wednesday, the eighth? Is that a board meeting? Monday, it says something about a board meeting.
That board of education meeting?
Board of Ed.
Mondays. Mondays, it's on February first, is that? February first is at the board of Ed? No. Monday?
That's not gonna get you a waiting time.
It isn't?
So the sixth is the board of Ed meeting?
Monday's the sixth.
Seventh, Tuesday, Wednesday's no good, Thursday, the night is no good. What about thirteen, the Monday? David, do you know? I'm looking at February.
Yep.
Thirteen.
Okay. If it's a Monday, we're, we're okay.
Why is it on a mail?
We got a budget workshop by February thirteenth, is that what?
Jack?
Jack, when's your presentation, the fourteenth?
I'm in twenty-eight.
For the closing reports?
Yeah.
Darren?
No.
It's one of the meetings, right? Can't be done. We have, uh...
They just agreed to make a presentation to town on the design, but talk about cost.
No.
That was they just kinda...
Ten? Not my first rose, but if that's what all gave.
When he amended it, you know? They recommended that the architect create a presentation to go directly.
Tenth is a Friday.
Yeah, but not talk about cost.
I don't know. You gotta pay for consulting.
No. Of course, we have a part of it.
I didn't know. I was tired, but I was concerned. People work for me.
I can't make it. Oh, I can't make it, no. I, I just, I was just gonna say I'm going to forty.
Is it daytime, like, like three o'clock or something? I'm not sure which my wife would like words, and I don't...
No, I guess I do.
Exactly.
So, does it matter anymore? Does it matter?
The only key is... I have five months out.
Exactly.
He's in trouble no matter what. He said no.
And that's chair.
Friday, the tenth at three o'clock?
February tenth, three, three a.m.
Friday, the tenth at three o'clock.
Wow. Okay. Yeah, I got it.
And this is the head of this building here.
I'm up to the races after a few moments ago.
What the next meeting is discussing further is to be what kind of a cost estimate? We're gonna be able to refine whether we're gonna have to do that septic system or not. We're gonna have new numbers, which reflect some of these things that have been taken out. And that'll affect the contingencies as well.
And I'll remind you all that, that the thing that we're working on is an exhibit to accompany the presentations associated with the pending referendum. The referendum, we've said this many times, the referendum is about a dollar figure, not about a design. So, don't be troubled by the fact that you might be proceeding ahead with something that there's some aspects of the design you're not all completely on board with, because you're not voting on that. You're not committed to doing anything for that. It's just in a formal sense.
So it's hard to get your head around the concept part, that this is what we're proposing right now, but if it gets approved, we go back to the drawing board. And we may find something that's very similar to what we're talking about right now, but it could be completely different. The process starts over again.
So it could be another two years.
I have cost money.
Okay, we have a next meeting scheduled for Friday, the 10th at 3 o'clock. At which time, hopefully, we'll have a little bit better idea of what the cost estimate's gonna be, and we can discuss the septic issues that we might have, and any other questions or concerns. And we might get an update from David as to where we use some of his work as far as the presentation. Any other business we wanna discuss tonight? You have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Dennis. All in favor?
Aye.
Both? We're adjourned.